All right. I would like to call to work in the Cascade Church Township Planning Commission Special Meeting for Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. At this time, I will report the attendance. All members are currently present. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance so far. And pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic, which is standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. And we will run along, we will approve, uh, we have a motion to approve the, sorry, Jeff, thank you, Governor, uh, Norvay. And I'll sort of under, Carson, uh, all those papers now.
Aye.
Close. Uh, next, does anyone have any, uh, conflicts they wish to be closed this back? Very none, I will move on to our five, and acknowledge any visitors in the audience that wish to speak. Brian, do we have any, any members of the audience?
There is one.
Okay. Does anybody in the, if your visitor wishes to speak, they can raise their hand electronically. Or star nine, I have to advise you that the, uh, this, we're running out of backups in the platform today. So, uh, if the camera angles or the audio are a little different than what you're used to, that is why I apologize. We're, we're making it worse because of the hand. Any, uh, any raised hand, Brian?
I'm not seeing one, though.
Excellent, then we will move right along and hope they heard us. Um, Article six is to review the, uh, report and recommendations from the Roundville Subcommittee. So, I'll, uh, give you a little introduction here. Uh, the Roundville Subcommittee, we leave that last week. And came up with what it feels are its, its draft recommendations, uh, for the process thus far. And, uh, members of that committee wish to, uh, bring that information to the Township Board. Uh, there is a desire to do that at the board meeting tomorrow night. So, before it makes its way to the Township Board, I thought it was appropriate for it to be in front of all of you. Uh, so that we could provide any input or tweaks that we wish to make before the presentation goes to the Township Board. And so that is why I called the special meeting. Now, just so everybody is aware, member Merlin had requested that we discuss this at the last meeting. But his request came in, uh, if you will, in the eleventh hour. And I didn't feel that it was appropriate to throw it in there and, you know, twelve hours, twenty-four hours, whatever for a meeting. I realized that in this instance, it's not a whole lot different than what we had requested. But the difference is that I received a request specifically from the supervisor to make sure that we have this ready to go for the Township Board. And that is why I called the special meeting. So, you don't typically call special meetings, but in this instance, just to adjust.
Are we on the agenda?
Yeah, we are.
What time is it?
Seventeen AM in this room. Okay. So, uh, so that's kind of the background. And then what we did is we had, uh, if you will, a couple of reasons here. What was the first thing? That, my last book. The, uh... The, the items in the packets were produced, but I, for us to go over. But there's a more layman terms form that was passed out to you guys. That, uh, Ralph had basically handwritten, uh, most of this during the meeting. It's essentially meant. And, uh, and, and so we have two different items here. We have that, and we have, we have practice, uh, well put together appendix. And what's the title of the other one?
Well, there is the suggested recommendations.
Suggesting recommendations and the special basics for it. Yeah, so we have three different documents, if you will. Uh, and, and, and I think the, uh, planning commission needs to determine which set of documents we're gonna... For one, or ten, we have something to add here when you want. Mr. Merlin's, uh, account is very detailed. Yeah, very good. It is. And what I want to do tomorrow night is plan some of this exact same packet. Each board member. I'm gonna do an introductory summary in the background of our committee. Okay. And then I wanna use, I'm gonna read these through at the meeting. To Ralph, but everything else. No, no, but he's the answer. But I'm gonna read these through. Okay. Explaining how we got to these things. But I want Mr. Merlin's very detailed ones to be handed out in their being. I, I think that's probably the right way to go. I think trying to read that in the meeting might turn some people off. I'm gonna play as a fuel. Okay, I read this one. Yeah. But it has all the facts. Right, right, so I think it's good to distribute the material, but it makes you work off of, but easier to read. Right, that later I'm gonna ask them all of this people to cash. Okay. So maybe what we should do tonight is start with one of the documents and just go through it line by line and see if anybody has any questions, answers. Because if we can answer the majority of those now, then that will probably be questions that will be answered by the, uh, you know, the board will probably ask too. So, the question is, which document do you wanna look at first? I think Ralph's document that, I think this one explains the... Okay. Yes.
The main one we wanna look at.
You're gonna have all, right. This is the one that I'm better at. Read. So, Ralph, are you?
I brought my computer with that program on it. If there are changes, I can enter them right now, modify it, upload it.
Wonderful. Okay, so everybody, we are, are on the first page of this document. Which I believe you all have. Subject. And let me just hand these here. So, um, who would like to take the lead? Do you want me to do that? Or I'll just start reading the topic. Ask for recommendations for the planning mission. Number one, PUD ordinances must be recorded. The problem we identified was the master deed was not recorded prior to construction.
Question.
Yes, sir.
I would prefer that to say neither the master deed nor the ordinance was recorded prior to construction. The facts, the factual document would say the ordinance was filed in twenty twenty. That was about twenty sixteen. Master deed in twenty eighteen.
Right, see that right here in the appendix.
Yeah, the factual appendix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is why both of these arguments are helpful. Uh, okay. So, a copy of the master deed must be, and I think this, this actually is very close to what the ordinance with our rules currently are.
Oh yeah, I mean, this ordinance said it must be filed.
We're not really looking for a change here. We're just identifying a problem.
Really isn't this what it's about?
Right. 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 So this is, yeah. Right?
Should we state that this is the law? We're not actually advising a change to the laws as much as that they're part of.
It can be fact, I was like, you know, this is nothing important, kidding, you know, who said that? That, you see, right? Yeah, it's like, yeah.
Say that again.
This PUD ordinances must be reported in accordance with current rules.
I would suggest, yes, and that.
In.
Recorded prior to construction. And then we have the question, what is construction?
We have.
Let's see.
Well, it's... There's more in here. Yeah, so what I've got is PUD ordinances must be reported in accordance with current rules.
So, PUD, um...
PUD ordinances. And, yeah. Yeah. Brian, you have a, you do you just jump right in?
Sure. Sentence below that. Just add PUD ordinance to a copy of the master deed and a PUD order. Nor neither a copy of the master deed or the, however you want to phrase it, but make sure that both items are listed.
The ordinance and the master deed must be... Oh, wait, I see what you're saying. Under the problem, you're saying neither the master deed nor the ordinance was recorded prior to construction.
Right.
Yes.
Follow up question. Uh, did we, is there a title to give this? I, I get that we're saying this is the Roundville Study Subcommittee, but the problem is, should we say the Roundville master deed? Was it called the Roundville Consortium Associated? Like whatever the entity was called, would that be the title of the master? That, I'm trying to break it clear in specific. Uh, or what, what should PUD was this?
This was a special Roundville PUD that was taken out of the PUD that, that was presentable.
So this wasn't kept in the Sentinel Point?
No, this was...
So it has a number, a valid duty, such that the right number.
I don't either, I don't have my head.
Brian, do you have that list that you have available to you?
I might, I don't know. Are you sure it wasn't just added to the Sentinel Point?
I thought it was added to the Sentinel Point PUD, but Craig seems to think it was, it was on it all. But I thought it was, I thought we modified the Sentinel Point PUD because initially it had, uh, it had multi-unit retired apartments or something slated for this piece of property.
I can hold mine, you have that map showing the PUD numbers that I kept a lot for Sentinel Point.
I can Google it now.
I think it's on the website, but I can...
Sorry, isn't that just makes me smile?
Oh.
We need more of those.
I know, everybody.
It's truly hard week.
Yeah. It's very hard. Okay. Moving right along. We go to number two?
No.
Oh, sorry. Remember Raffin?
Minor change, but signature plural signatures must be, for the supervisor.
Signature plural, that's a good catch. Member Merlin, you have it?
That was the sentence that I was...
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll give the number two. Oh.
Member Merlin is the Roundville Department's tangent that you shall?
Uh, no. I shall review what I put in the legal data. I, I, I do know what was at stake. Right, and it's not...
Dones.
Uh, I, I, I don't, I, that's why I'm asking, because it is actually specific. I view this as descriptive and not the final legal.
Okay. Okay. Moving right along to number two. Software needs to be acquired and used to record key documents. The problem, clearly a checklist was needed to make sure master deeds, bonds, and other pre-construction items were completed. Fire the dish was upbuilding. Computer software needs to be acquired and used for tracking of projects, including files, approvals, and files. Documents are to be filed with the clerk. All playing, the department staff should have access to this software. Those software. Yeah.
One. Brian, do you have, like, any suggestions, any type of vendor?
I know the building department uses V S and A for all of their permits and checks.
Do they have something specific to what this is talking about?
I, I'd have to check with them exactly. There's somewhere that we could fit this into that or for you to get a different system tailored for the...
Do you think that this is a good direction, a good recommendation, or do you think that it's not? I mean, clearly...
My second question. When we talk about the problem, the problem really is, in my opinion, that, and I'm gonna go around some sort of a limb that might cut off. Guys, that, so, yeah, there will, trust me, that typically, in my understanding, the clerk kinda has some sort of a spreadsheet of what should be happening. When these permits and stuff should be happening, and all of the different departments within township reports back to when things have been done, like these have been earned. Um, to be kept on some sort of spreadsheet or there to be documentation for everyone within the township. Whoever's touching something like this to come in and to find out where we at with this project. We, um, they're asking for this. We see where we're at with this, um, and we don't have that. So when we talk about the problem, clearly the checklist was needed. I feel like we need to list what the real problem was. And instead, we're saying clearly a checklist. Well, I have a checklist on my brochure. I mean, this is not the problem. And I hate to call out the clerk because that's my understanding of normally how it is within a township or in a city or in a county. But I, I feel like there needs to be a real problem this year. And to say there wasn't a clear checklist to make sure these things were, needs to be completed, clearly that is the problem. But what is abnormal and what wasn't done? Um, and then, you know, when we talk about solutions, I feel like we should be listing solutions, which I feel like we're trying to do along with the problem. Um, we should be recommending some sort of software to them. And my understanding from what I can tell, there's not going to be sort of great software out there that's done with this. Some townships, cities, maybe have their own software that's been developed for them. Um, but, and again, that's why I refer to Brian, because I am now, this is not my specialty. But I feel like this needs to be, this is a big problem, but, and I feel like it needs to be...
No, 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 let it go ahead.
Um, when we looked at Ryan Wilson, I think Ryan Wilson.
Yeah.
Um... Computerized process system.
Was Brian Wilson's?
He's always...
He's had a, since I've done it, a permit, like a permit. And he had it all listed down in a very orderly way that we could follow easily. I was wondering if, because it seems to be, what I had said is, first, we need to have this process be part of the overall computerized process that includes all requirements. Could be pre-construction activities, reports are completion, status of inspection department permit, ongoing fight visits, citizens complaints, others wanted to, and all reports of non-CCT regulatory agencies. They're involved, in this case, the road commission and Eagle. I would have thought Ryan's, Wilson's software would be pretty expandable.
It, it does a lot of that for those building permits. They have to various site inspections. If there's a, um, I don't know about a complaint, but there's an issue with that, then they, they can flag it so that any other inspector can see that out there, so...
Yeah, I would have thought that we would have a, in essence, a process map in writing that goes through all the steps. And then we just load additional steps onto his software. If that software is expandable. And then you'd have access from the planning department to do, to that, brought that computerized system. And the clerk would have access, because the clerk has responsibilities in that area. And, um, Ryan has access. And I would have thought Ben might have access to that as well. Um, so it manages not only the, make sure everything gets done. Because in this case, there were performance bonds that were forgotten. There was retaining wall, which was loosely worded, but was forgotten. Other words, that's forgotten.
Okay, so, remember Mosley had something to add, or do you go now?
Well, just the, because of the time delays on this project, we, for the first year, nothing happened. And I think the ball got dropped a long way.
But...
And I think the chairman was would take care of the problem.
Well, in most townships. Right.
Right, just like the...
No, you had something to add?
Yeah, I, I, I just worried that it was scripted to go directly to the technology and just...
I, I would agree.
I think that dictating or requesting the business process be defined and then let, let the staff determine what the business process is. Whether that's a current software or new software, is it a spreadsheet or just a more organized...
Yeah, or maybe even the staff in consultation with the planning commission, so we could be kind of up to date with what the new process is. Just be, I'd like to understand what the process is.
Defining the process even is huge, just that's a long way.
A little bit of representation there. Set forth and writing into the planning process.
The, Ben, do you, oh, tell me, I'll give a... Oh, yeah, well, uh, Mr. Merlin, will you explain how the process was done in the planning director's box?
Well, the planning director...
Versus software.
When I had called the planning director, Imperial, related to plan, count bill. And was shown a photograph by, um, this fat who took it, of a box with no organization, no structure, no checklist. Now, he did have one file that had, like, you put papers into the file and as it builds. So, there was at least that level of organization. But most of that was just paying people for different everyday things. So, we do not have the planning department at this point. And Brian, you can correct me. I mean, I saw the, the, in theory, planning process laid out that Ben and you may have shown us.
Yeah, that kind of flow chart we had.
That flow chart. Um, but that doesn't get into the detail of a performance bond that was required.
No, it doesn't.
Um...
Wait, by the way, what I'm, what I'm just suggesting that it's, it's two in the leaves, suggest software as the best software to solve the process. And we have to have the business process accurately mapped out. And that's our suggestion. And what is needed to support the business process may be technology, it may not. But I, I just wanna...
Remember, I could step to the cloud. Should he be...
So, as I understand this, that the, the problem is in fact that the key task deadlines and order of task was not maintained. The solution is, uh, we recommend that the township maintain a Gantt chart with required tasks and deadlines. Make this available to the public, the all key stakeholders. I think that that's the solution. One would already arrive that software would be the way to do that.
But the only, excuse me, why have, I speak...
Yes.
I think the, I agree, Mr. Raffin, that we have to define the process. The second problem the township has with respect to process here is it crosses functional areas. So, you have waste spaces in order chart that the, things could slip in and disappear. These requirements that were set initially in two thousand and fifteen were heavily negotiated by lawyers. You know not to forget those kinds of things. But here, for some one, whatever reason, they were forgotten. Were, that was well before you got your, right, I think. We're talking about two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. Um, so, I think we, we recognize the process in the departments that are involved, which would include the inspections, the Department for inspections group. It would also be the clerk's office. Because the performance bonds are to be delivered to the clerk's office. I thought they would be delivered to the finance area, but they're delivered to the clerk's office. So, and there's at least three different asylum. Define the process, then you get that Gantt chart, make it available to all three departments. And it should have, if the board of trustees puts additional requirements in the work, you just have it to the Gantt chart. So...
Change what this says.
Right.
What we're saying.
So, I, so I'm going over it.
I, I think that the problem needs to be changed, that, that clearly a checklist was needed. I think saying there was no organization or checklist to make sure the master deed was...
Brian, to your knowledge, is that an accurate statement to say that there was no checklist?
I really haven't gone into what was missed at that time or whatnot. So I didn't give it to that fire. But that's what it sounds like, yep, is that, you know, the...
Process, you have a checklist today.
Typically, not in the software, but so, you know, if a PUD is approved, then they have to require a stormwater agreement and a PUD ordinance and a bond. I'll send out a letter to the applicant then with all those items on there, and I'll literally check them off as they're given to us.
What you use traffic, you don't have a form, or is it, is it all here?
Yeah, well, yeah, and then on that letter. So it's usually with the conditions and the, you know, that are approved. I put those all on a letter that's sent to them. So how you...
How do you, like, do you use the letter?
Yeah. Yeah.
How do you, the letter, say, because this has been, how do you do up something? Yes.
From that, when I saw, get the stormwater, and it's all checked out. Yep, yep.
Says, hey, they skip. Do you normally go back and look? Do you check off those then when they come in?
I try to, yeah, I don't know if I put pen to paper every time, which I would ship.
Easier for you.
Let's not, I'm not trying to, let's not get into what he's doing now. I don't think this is, he's not on trial.
Right. Um...
Did I read what I think I just heard?
Yes.
Please, more of us. The problem, there was no organizational chart or checklist available to make sure documents were reported.
Yes, or you could leave the, um, to make sure master deeds, bonds, and other pre-construction items were completed prior to construction.
The Brian's?
Just like the...
The big key parts.
So then the organization, he, that he's the boss, that he would have a couple of all...
So then the master needs to, rather than say specifically computer software, maybe it's a little more broad.
Yeah, I didn't suggest computer software, but...
Member Merlin.
Uh, two comments. First, do we want to, from our discussions on ground bill, do we want to have that process flow through and include post-start of construction items? I would have thought we would, particularly now when this is, the construction was going on for four years. Um, so that we can, if I, I...
I see where you're going on. I, I think that that is important in some cases. I mean, if there's different phases or different targets, uh, for instance, if after the sun pulses built, they have to install a, you know, neighborhood park. I mean, obviously, you're gonna want that checklist, uh, in, in play through that whole process.
And here, one of the issues was, was retaining wall never required, we just...
Right, we did not have it set deadline when it had to be built. So in theory, it could have been the very last thing.
But that's why these checklists should encompass what's needed throughout the development process.
Not just what's needed prior to construction. Right. Right. So, so maybe, maybe it should also say, um, why are the issues of building permits? And goals, and other goals, or, or other milestones during construction, or how do you wanna, how do, how do wanna word that? I'm not a very good...
Why don't we say... No, why don't we say, set for, set for in writing, be defined process, development projects, so that required files will be made. Required actions are completed before those permits issued, and proper oversight and responsibility to civilian complaints appear.
I, I think the civilian complaints, that's a whole nother, I think it's in two separate versions here.
I think, if you got...
I think it needs to say something in this... I think it needs to say something in the simply jumping across multiple departments. But if there needs to be, or something that multiple departments within the township can access, and I don't know exactly how.
We stated that it made available to all stakeholders within the township, public, and one, and public, yeah.
With made available. The method.
Of all these stakeholders.
Just want to be careful with me by in public.
With the township.
In public, like, meaning in public, that's. Do you want to go, I don't think you're going as far as a, and I'm like, sort of the database, but.
My mind. It's, it, it all is now, these search our minutes where all of that is filed. In my mind, it would be great for the, like, it might, just my opinion, there are a lot of pissed off members of the Crown Hill, that we would have had, where they were. Where it was made available, a lot of the questions they had, like.
Yeah, this is the soul thing of what I think is much, much worse, if you're talking about. Yes, versus available, plus. I understand what you're getting at.
The B A, the B A S A that Brian uses, that software, is one button, it's all about.
Um, sorry.
Yeah, like, if you go to the, the, the tax assessment software, it's the same, it's the same software, just a different part of that suite. So, yeah, that, that, I like, they're really, really good. You're telling me they're really good at it.
Yes, and it.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so, okay, so, can you? Can I read that paragraph, please? Yes, okay, first of all, the problem, uh, there was no organizational chart or checklist, uh, made available to make sure. Master deeds or bonds and other project documents were recorded. And then, okay, computer software needs to be acquired and used for tracking projects, kind of including bonds, kind of approvals, deposits, period. Documents are to be filed with the clerk, while planning department staff should have access to the software, also, kind of a software record should be made available to all public. And I think what we're saying is that. We want to see more of a process than an emphasis on a software. So, do we want to?
So.
Or define. Or with.
A defined with this process as a computer software.
Define business.
Or a document that is defined. Just like clearly, like, the business process that may or may not lead to the software.
Find business process? Yes, so, use software or a defined business process. I mean, choosing one or the other, right, I, I guess the software would be included in one, so, right. And I, I don't think we necessarily have to act. It be computer software if the process works, because we adapt the process that works, but.
I mean, it's a reusable process.
Right, yeah, I don't think we have the technology here, I mean, having said that, and being in a number of cross-functional organizations. It's got to be somewhere on the computer process, or things get wrong. And that's just inevitable, um, and also the computerized process, the accountability.
Does. Uh. Okay. Do you want me? Yes. Computerized. So it's a, a defined, computerized business process?
I would.
Is it a defined business process?
I wouldn't say it's a phone process, it doesn't work either, it's a phone. Was it another reason I said public, that forces that, what it is, that available, to let the software? I would, I mean, if I were to say software, which I did in mind, well, it just seems to me from my experience, it's software makes sense, again. But it started with the defined.
The defined development process needs to be acquired and used for the tracking of projects, kind of including bonds, kind of approvals and deposits, period. Documents are to be filed with a clerk, all planning department staff should have access to the software. I think you got a computer software out right there. It really should say all planning department, uh. Again, would you say stakeholders?
Well, all stakeholders.
Sorry, we got a one-two stuff, but I need to fix what we did.
All planning department staff should have access.
Stakeholder.
Key township stakeholders.
Maybe you don't mean the state planning staff, you just say. That, that, that sentence should instruct, the one that says all planning department staff, should just say, all township stakeholders, including the public. Brian, do you have any thoughts on that? Are you? No. See any reply, or are we, are we stepping in anything that shouldn't be?
I don't think so.
You're off the line. I'd like a lot of feedback.
No, I think that sounds, sounds fine as you're reading.
I think it was.
Yeah, that's a very.
The fire.
Okay, right now, what I've got is, uh, all township stakeholders should have access.
Go before that.
Be in that. Read, read that whole, the whole answer. A defined development process needs to be acquired.
Set up.
Define.
Did you start with the define?
Start on the left side, define. I think it said define, so that's going to be. A defined development process needs to be defined.
Developed, change that.
Fine, defined process needs to be developed.
And used for the tracking of projects, including bonds, approvals, deposits, documents are to be filed with a clerk. All township stakeholders should have access. Are they good? For example? Very good.
Wait, and all township and the public.
I would say they're a stakeholder in the township. I guess unless your belly is right on the board. That's true. The, number three, can we go to number three, or we, or we can tap on moving to number three? I see no complaints, so I'm going to number three, establish a selection and approval process for a new township planer. This is consistent with the wording in our draft bylaws, the township board of trustees and consultational planning commission is responsible for hiring, planning, I'm really not sure that we remember who in there. But, uh, but it's there, so.
The only thing that I say just is a general thing is. It is consistent in the wording in the bylaws, but the only thing would be is, instead of. In a way, uh, they need to go sit in front of their, with the township board and sit and interview them, it would be nice to have a panel. Of people, not everyone, from both sides.
It's funny you mention that, because we actually talked about that in the committee, uh, and I don't know what that would look like if that would ever happen, but. Uh, I think that's kind of the idea of this in consultation, so.
That's a lovely, I would change that to be something to be developed, you know, of members, of, you know, but, of.
Do we, do we need this in here for this?
I, I don't know.
Need to be in for round out?
I'm getting that, I'm getting that.
Get in, in terms of, in terms of, be on the committee recommendation. Word.
You know, but I, I, I just made my thought process here, so that none of us. I mean, we, during the round hill process, there was not a planning director hired, that process didn't occur, and when the last planning director was hired, none of us were around. I mean, it, it, you know, we didn't even have bylaws, so I.
I feel like maybe at our next meeting, we write a memo, memo, no, I'm sorry, memo to the board and to the township manager. With our recommendation for the interview process for the next planning director, just to let them know, um, but that's how I would handle it, I just don't think that's the same.
Remember, brother.
I think that you're, the interview process. Is a separate issue that we could put in a memo to, of a suggestion on. The key thing that Mr. Monksley and I, in our. Discussions with people around the township, because the litigation said. That, the litigation answer that we filed in the relief complaint, said Mr. Peterson was not. Mr. Peterson had the job as described in his job description, which did not have any director in it. So, we were essentially without a planning director. Then I went to Mr. Swayze, and he said, I can name anybody in my group. You want me to name him, just write a letter out and name him. And so, I think what Mr. Monksley and I, in our investigative stage, in the, so, many as a whole, we thought this position had so much power that it. Because of its ability to, for example, the round hill, infer, and change a whole lot of things.
I, I follow what you're saying, so the process needs to be a better. Right, okay, all right, then are we good with the wording of what we're saying?
Could I just clarify, the above we said, number one, in accordance with our, do we need to clarify number three, that we're not asking for a new, or is it?
No, we, we.
We haven't, we haven't actually adopted the bylaws yet, so I think, and the board hasn't approved those, so I think at this point, I think it's important to say that it's consistent with the wording in our draft bylaws, so they know that if this is coming, one way or not. I don't, I, I don't really know exactly how this, all right, all right, moving on to the second page, number four, any deviations from the original P U D ordinance need to be approved before changes are served. The problem, the board planning director made minor changes as a law in the ordinance, the subcommittee feels many of these changes are not minor. Yeah, we're not minor. With no written, the whole ordinance, the end of the first one should be lower, it's not upper case. Subcommittee feels many of these changes were not minor, with no written records of the changes found, and without the board. Or planning commission ever receiving notice of changes, it makes it more difficult for Cascade Township to follow the P U D ordinance accurately. Any minor changes to a P U D ordinance must be approved in writing in advance by the planning director. All changes must also be reviewed and approved by the planning commission, if the builder proceeds with any changes before approval is granted, the builder will proceed at their own risk. We talked for a great deal about this as a subcommittee, because I use the analogy of what if the builder comes in and he needs to move a mailbox six feet? Otherwise, he has to, you know, move a massive power transformer or something, so he wants approval from the planning director, move the box six feet over. Obviously, I think everybody here is at the concept request, and they would give him the not to do that, right? The issue is, at what point does the minor request become more major, such as maybe dividing a condo complex into individual lots? So, there has to be some accountability, and we have to know what's going on, so that if something comes back to us in two years. We know that, oh, yeah, we, there was a minor change that we were made aware of, yes.
Right, defining all the change, is it defined within the township?
It gives examples in, uh. There's an actual definition, I know it gives examples in chapter sixteen of additional parking or. An increase in building size of less than five percent, five thousand square feet, but here, I think it should be clear if you're referencing changes to the actual P U D ordinance, or is it just changes to the site? It's moving a mailbox six feet wouldn't have any impact on the P U D ordinance, it's just a very, it's a minor alteration on the site. There's a change in the P U D ordinance, that's something that, you know, typically comes back with the planning mission for a P U D amendment. So, if they're just moving, you know, three pine trees from this corner to that corner, is that something that I can say, yep, you're still meeting, what was approved? I mean, do you want every one of those ones coming back to you guys?
I, I see where you're going.
Yes, and that's why, I feel like. I feel like we don't have a recommendation yet for this, I think this is a very deep thing that I feel like we need to dig into, and there needs to be some wording changing. I feel like we can say what the problem is and what happened, but I feel like. Within the next ten hours, I don't think that we can draft up what our recommendation is, this is really deep when you're talking about changes, especially minor versus major changes. P U D versus site changes, numerical changes versus, you know, non-numerical changes, and numerical changes would be, what he said, ten percent. You know, a lot of towns give them, I mean, up to twenty-five percent changes that they can make on their own without having to come to us. And I, I do think there needs to be some sort of new way, I don't think that it's fair, and I think we do need to trust people in a normal situation to be able to give. You know, Brian or somebody the ability to make their discretion, to make changes on the fly, to do some things within certain guidelines, and I don't think that every mailbox can be moved up. And what they were agreed to, to kind of.
I would agree with you, but I do think that when he makes a change for the site plan, then those should be noted to us in some way. Maybe it's on a page in the packets, you know, we don't have to talk about it necessarily, but we need to know that the changes were made, that gives you a great example.
So, what I, you just talked about, all of these things need to be recorded and held open to public, and we can go work, and the public can see these things. And if there's rule stating that Brian can make certain changes on his own, his discretion, why does it need to come to us?
Because in the past twenty years, there have been instances where minor changes have been made.
There were major.
Depends on the opinion of the person, but I know what, and those retriever planted, and they were, they were supposed to be planted in spot A, and they ended up in spot C. And it was the planning director's decision to move those, and that's fine, it's within his rights, the ordinance says you can do that. The issue was that the surrounding neighborhood was never made aware of that, the township board was never made aware of that, and the planning commission was never made aware of that. So, ten years later, when an applicant comes in for a building, the whole project gets put on hold, because they have to look back and find out where the trees were, where they're supposed to be. Whereas if the planning director had notified nine people on this committee, then, then.
Period, that's my point, if it was recorded.
You're right.
Those recorded in this documents that we're talking about, where it needs to be recorded, that somebody can go back and see why and where.
Yes, but my, my point is it was supposed to be recorded before, the documents, the documents are still there, so I'm just saying, you can throw an extra layer in by telling everybody what's going on, that's all I.
Scott, I'd say there's a difference between me just giving you an update at the next meeting of, hey, I made these changes, and then needing your approval for moving this or that, I mean, that's a big difference, too.
Right, I'm asking, I'm asking for the update, I'm not asking for approval, I would like to know what's going on. Particularly, like, I use a great example, the Brown Hill, they had the P U D, and then they come back a few years later for an amendment to it. Well, if we, if we know of the changes that, that made the minor changes, uh, it helps that process. And I'm not saying that we need to approve each minor change, I just want to be notified of.
But I also think that having an approved planning director. A responsible planning director to make. The correct choices and to make those decisions when. A decision is really a major change, like some of the changes with the P U D at Crown Hill, those shouldn't have come to the venue, there's a lot of things that should come here to talk. That were not had been brought here, and I think that it's very hard, and things went really bad for a long time, to try to have faith and to have faith in the process. Um, because we're going to end up making a lot more work for people. Because we're gonna end up making a lot more work for people and a lot more.
Yes.
Um, actually, the definition of a planer, you're right, if I example, it's one of them.
So there's no clear definition, it's just samples. What are they? I mean, briefly, can you just summarize them?
Change location or kind of landscape. Just relocation and the problem, sidewalk, refugees, light driveway, sign retention or detention bond. Increase in building size. With the proposed building on the, on the new site plan, more than ten feet or five percent. As two others like that. And I'm not, I almost, my view actually is more in line with what Rudy was saying as well. I don't think we can. There are layers here that was very rated by people for mailbox movement, which is clearly minor. I think it's appropriate that the planning division gets notified of any of, any changes that occur. And in fact, the ordinance, which has a site plan attached to it, says even minor changes have to be approved. I do think it's a matter of our proposal or our recommendation, I think, should say that the process or the definition of what constitutes a minor change. And what how that can be, how this, how we can create a situation. But how we can create a situation where we give the planning director the appropriate level of trust with notice loss, things used approved. And where we just say, no, that isn't minor under any definition.
I I agree with you because, and maybe to be able to say, you hear the example of the neighborhood. You know, like if you're noticing, Brian, how hard would it be for you, I don't know how many of these come to you, for you to keep a running tally? I mean, we usually meet twice a month, so to keep a running tally between our meetings, so any minor changes that you would approve and you just send it out with our, our agenda is a, have a cycle for all of us of any minor changes that you would move. How hard would that be for you to keep a running tally or for you to send to us?
I don't think that would be too difficult and a lot of these come in as an admin site plan review, so we create a case file for it. Usually noted at the end of the year or things like that, but.
And I do think. So, um, it needs to be part of that chart, because it needs to be noted in something the public, if they need to see when did this just get changed.
I'm saying if he brings it to us and it's in the packet, because typically, the first spot people go to look for things, they miss something, is the minutes of the meeting.
Like, let's say, I'm sorry, so let's say, um, in January twenty twenty, there was a meeting about my neighborhood and they agreed to do something, put trees in a certain spot. And then Brian agreed, they wanted to change because there's power lines and they need to move them here and blah blah blah. And so none of that happened until twenty twenty-two. And then I was mad in twenty twenty-three, I was like, those trees got big and blocked my view, I couldn't drive out, I couldn't see. I would go to that original meeting in twenty twenty when it was approved and I would see that site plan and say, no, those trees were supposed to be here. Well, I should be able to look up that number and tell them that this hopefully stops for someday. And I should be able to see any changes that were made to that. When I reveal this, it was recorded in twenty twenty-one, that this change that Brian made was reported, that those trees got moved to this location. I wouldn't look at the meeting minute from the planning mission of twenty twenty-one, because I wouldn't even know, I would never. Right, which I've done in this.
But it's difficult.
Sometimes the dollar amount finds minor. Ten thousand or five thousand or seven thousand, whatever the number makes it happen. If it's under that number, it probably qualifies as minor change.
Be another.
Move a building from one part of the site to another, the cost may not change, grow a building, but it would be very significant. Yes, I I hear you saying.
I've rewritten the paragraph fifth. And, uh, uh, I'm just simply saying, any minor changes to a P U D ordinance must be approved in writing in advance by the planning director. All changes must also be reviewed by the planning mission. All changes need to be recorded. If the builder proceeds with any changes before approval is granted, the builder will proceed.
It can even be on the agenda of any other, let's just get to say minor changes and and label it.
All I said was, all changes must also be reviewed by the planning.
Oh, okay. Okay, so there's one other point there that it should be changed when you say uh, minor changes be in advance, must be approved in writing in advance by the planning director. Should we not have something that says in it, copy? In the.
He's like, and we.
Okay, I was.
And it just needs to be recorded.
Only thing that I would add to your paragraph is a notion of that the issue of what constitutes minor a definition of that needs to be developed in consultation with the planning department and the planning commission. So that common sense prevails.
Yeah, and and other townships or.
And the one other thing that I would raise, by the way, and it goes back to page one, I'm sorry to say. Um, because that, we talked about it. What was very problematic. Was not the order that said we had that. It was with the site plan. We never had a site plan that had an approval standpoint and a signature by the.
We may have that later on. You're getting quite way ahead there. Yeah, so, okay, so number four, we're going to number four, moving on to number five. Okay, moving right along, number five, who's responsible for enforcement of zoning and site plans? The problem, the person responsible needs to be clearly identifiable by citizens and staff. This person needs to be willing to stop a project or part of a project. The person also needs to be very knowledgeable about process and work. They should also report incidents regularly to the planning commission. This way, if a request to modify a P U D ordinance or plans in question comes before the planning commission, they can be more familiar with the history. And then, uh, the answer is that the planning director. But, well, I, now everybody has their hand up on this one, so I'll let Wendy go first because she has the biggest file.
All right, at first time. My first question is, what currently do our regulations state, Brian, do you know who can enforce, um, who can do code enforcement?
It would be the, probably the planning director or the designate. Or their designate, so like a zoning administrator.
We had a court enforcement officer and we don't need more because they're designed. And then the planning director decides, sorry, we didn't. From habit, we go up to manager Swayze, correct? That'd be the next step.
Yep, okay.
When I talked to the planning director, the former planning director, he said two things, normally in West Michigan, there is no person who is responsible for, in essence, that the development, they still, as the development should.
Right.
We have it, we have it ordinance.
Basically, what Greg is saying is that it's a complaint-based system. And there isn't a person at the township that's going up with a tape measure to make sure that each building is exactly twelve feet from where it's supposed to be in so many feet and measuring the square footage of every house.
And does a summary, like Brian, do you go out at the end and like, look and say, hmm, this kind of looks like what you told us it was gonna look like?
Ideally, maybe do a view like that, just like take a look, but not, again, not out there with a tape measure or not during the process of when it's being built. Kind of describing a project manager.
And that is consistent with the municipality mayor in the area.
It's just a format change, number five, I don't know if we want to put it forward as a question. More of a statement like the others, but establish roles and responsibilities for the enforcement of zoning and site.
Now, there is.
Instead of saying the planning director.
Questions, number five, we should put it in the form of saving the book. Which if I understand correctly is to establish the roles and responsibilities for enforcement of zoning. And again, not be restrictive of how it is.
I would, I would agree with that. Because, you know, one of the things I see here, to me, that the bigger problem here is that there is a confusion with the general public of who is the person in charge of a certain thing. And especially in times when someone maybe, uh, moves away or or something along those lines. And then the other issue is that when they go in the office, there isn't a clear uh, the, the staff in the office doesn't know who is clearly responsible for whatever is the citizen is complaining about. And that's, and that's part of the problem, that there's this, oh, it's not for him, well, no, wait, it's not for him, it's not for them. You know, they can just tend to get kicked around a little bit.
The only other thing I'll say, again, I think that's a relationship, I think the problem is to, okay. I think the answer to it is not the planning director, I think the answer is to hire an enforcement officer. I think that number, um, I think number eleven can go to the line with them, then maybe you put X.
Well, I think so. Right, number eleven says, number.
If we want them to hire their enforcement officer, I think part of the problem that has been identified, if I'm wrong, is that there needs to be, um, a project manager is another part of that problem. And maybe those two should be put together, so if there is discussion, it can be discussed together.
Okay, I made a couple of changes. And in particular, I just said, number five, establish the staff person responsible for enforcement of zoning and site plans.
The only reason I'm leaving the broadest roles and responsibilities is because I think that these are open for how they do that. A zoning enforcer, I mean, like a staff study could be done.
Recently, I need to say to the one word. I've got establish the staff person responsible for enforcement of zoning and site plan. So establish rules and responsibilities for the enforcement of zoning and site.
And that's the plan, I mean, it's not just the site plan, it's the ordinance. By the way, there is in the budget this year. I just know as a director of Public Works. New position responsible for building rounds, administration, artist pathways, dorm water, water sewer streets, engineering, project manager.
Let me, let me read this back, make sure.
We gotta write.
That's right. Uh, establish roles and responsibilities for enforcement of zoning and site. And then at the, down at the bottom, I say, C C G needs to hire an enforcement officer.
And again, I feel like what you're saying is that they need to do, uh, yeah.
Right, because we had an enforcement officer and, and so the answer, I don't think is to have an enforcement officer.
But I do think that we need to maybe plan number eleven. Whether it needs to be on separate point or it be all one.
We want to jump out to number eleven, maybe that needs to be number six.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking. And just maybe adding maybe the body of that where it talks about.
So, so maybe the answer of number eleven needs to be the answer of number five, instead of, say, the planning director. Would that, would that solve your problem, maybe, to maybe raise eleven, we just take a lot less answer of five? So we should, we should review the answer for eleven right now and maybe you should cut and paste that. Also, put it up as, as the answer of number five and then we can kind of tear that apart a minute.
Can I ask a question, which is, we have, we had this fast, at one point was.
Right, and she took care of.
But that's front of me and different than, I thought that was when someone was. Or when, I believe she didn't get involved in the project.
No, no, she did not get involved in projects. Uh, they, somebody explained this to me once, it was probably Steve, and he used very good language to explain the difference between the ordinance enforcement officer and code enforcement officer, uh, as Stephanie was. And I, and I don't remember exactly the differences, but I think, Brian, do you have a way to describe that?
A little, but I mean, there's the general code and the zoning code. I believe at one point Stephanie maybe did all of that, but then she transitioned to, or the general code where if there's noise complaints or you know, broken down vehicles and yards and things like that, and the zoning code enforcement was left to the planning department. So planning director is designated, so a zoning administrator, something like that.
I think the idea there was that most of the, the general code stuff, if it wasn't resolved on a friendly knock on the door, but hey, take care of us, the next step. Correct, is that you give an infraction from, some infraction from police officers.
Eventually, that's what it gets to, a knock on the door or a letter or two or that.
So she handled that side. It is, it is. We're talking more about ordinance enforcement, I think, but she was more a code, general code.
And I do think we need to have someone.
Number one.
Well, I, I had a lot of conversations with Stephanie Faz about this property over, I guess he wrote, where they refer to all kinds of vehicles on the property, and I mean, it looked like a construction zone. Yeah, with a whole bunch of construction stuff. And, uh, so she was involved in code enforcement and dealt with that person, found out what was going on. And he really was, was trying to make amends and get the project or the whole situation straightened out.
So, uh, number five, we answered, the draft answer, number five, what do we have so far?
What is number five? I would do.
Who is responsible for, well, actually, I can't, I can't read it.
What is, what is that for number five?
Okay, you want me to start right at the beginning of number five or just?
Right at the beginning.
Establish rules and responsibilities for enforcement of zoning and site plans.
I would put it in zoning ordinance. I would put it in zoning ordinance and site.
Zoning ordinances and site plans. Uh, the problem, the person responsible needs to be clearly identifiable by citizens and staff. This person needs to be willing to stop the project or part of a project. The person also needs to be very knowledgeable about process ordinances. They should also report incidents regularly to the planning commission. This way, if a request to modify the QD ordinance or plans in question comes before the planning commission, they can be more familiar with the history. And I've changed the last one here to say CCG needs to hire an enforcement officer.
Okay, and then.
I'm not sure all of them.
Yes, we stopped changing it to say, um, the need, I've taken away the enforcement officer and putting, leaving the staff.
Oversee and inspect state construction project, this should be someone with years of job site experience and civil engineering background.
Yeah.
Basically, the number eleven answers.
The number eleven.
Yeah.
Number eleven.
Okay, we'll do.
No, I think that's what we. Can you get rid of number one?
Yeah.
Well, yes, once you move that answer, yeah.
I don't know all, all the conversations for this, but again, the person, this person, we're defining it as one.
We are. It might be a team. I was thinking the same thing as you were reading, that we, we say each other personally a lot, so maybe we should say it's the need.
Well, I would say those persons need to be clear to the citizens. And then that. They need to stop the project. And I think those concerns are. But if the person who does not.
Again, I, okay, so, so the only first is the problem? You with me so far now? Okay, it, it needs to say goes instead of a person. And then it'd be. Those responsible, that's all they say is those responsible, that's the problem. So say, those responsible. Need to be need, yep, during the, then the next sentence should start with they need.
And to the point that got brought up here, I think that would most likely look like a team, probably myself, working with a project manager and civil engineering background. Possibly probably a code enforcement specific person too, so that'd be my.
Perhaps, this new guy initially, person.
Yeah, something like that, it's probably.
Well. Or they, they, yeah.
Therefore, also need to be very knowledgeable about processes.
I like that. Say again. Okay, you have, uh, need, willing to stop the project or the project, comma, they're. Therefore.
Uh, therefore, they also need to be very knowledgeable about processes, processes.
Okay, let me read it back. Please do.
The problem. Those responsible need to be clearly identifiable by citizens and staff. This person needs to be willing to stop the project or part of a project, period. Therefore, they need to be very knowledgeable about process and ordinances, period.
Okay, the, the second sentence, you still have this person, it shouldn't be they. We're not talking about one person, we're talking about a team. Yes, number one?
Two comments. If I remember correctly, and from Max, you can correct me if I incorrect by recollection. This was the first project in whose memberment that it ever had a stop word.
Wayne Harrell.
Wayne Harrell.
Oh, no, no, it wasn't Wayne Harrell, Brian, Brian Wilson, Brian Wilson, first time in, is, I think he said it, what, sixteen years?
Somewhere like that.
Okay, excuse me, because Wayne Harrell said it was the first time he really received a complaint about uh soil erosion problems.
In all his years?
Well, yeah, enough to stop the project.
Certainly a few years before, Mr. Clary and. But anyway, but just the point that I think we need to say to give due process to this person, that there needs to be a enforcement process which provides notice and, and it turns out.
But I think that has to be like the regulations that township needs to be changed to give them the ability to make that, I don't think we can.
Right, I don't think that's, but I'm saying this guy, the way this stop word. We just said he has to be willing to do that, this guy's got to be willing to say no. We have people in the townships that aren't willing to say no to something. And this is, this is, this is saying, this person has to be willing to say, I'm sorry, that's not.
And then if you would have said, uh, that work, is it be willing to say no and engage in the process if needed? I'm happy with that. I just see like this guy running in on his way, small, the black guy.
Ralph, can you, can you read what we have for, for number five, start from the top, please?
Okay, here we go. Uh, establish rules and responsibilities for enforcement of zoning ordinances and site plans. The problem, those responsible need to be clearly identifiable by citizens and staff. They need to be willing to stop the project or part of the project. Therefore, they need to be very knowledgeable about processes, about process and ordinances, period. They should also report incidents regularly to the planning commission. This way, if they request to modify the QD ordinance or plans in question comes before the planning commission, it can be more familiar with the history. In the last paragraph. Need for staff number to oversee and inspect site construction projects. Preferably, this should be someone with years of job site experience and a civil engineering background. This does not need to be a full time position.
What about, do we say the answer, it does not need to be full time?
Yeah, I have to say need for staff members to oversee and inspect construction sites, and I would just say this should be someone with years of experience, job site experience and or any of those four, a civil engineering background.
Okay, so first thing to do is to make member plural. And then on the second line, years of job site experience, and then we change it to or a civil engineering background.
I was agreeing.
And then we strike the last sentence that talks about uh the part time position, yeah, I, I like that, yes, number one?
I would, if we're talking with civil engineer. What I'm, what I think was that is someone by the row or.
He is civil, he is a civil engineer.
But.
Or the state civil engineering, but.
That's the point.
I don't want a twenty-two-year-old person right out of engineering school.
Well, I, I know, but that's, that's, that's uh human resources, you know, that's. We can't micromanage everything from this, we have to have some faith in our scene.
Age.
Okay. Moving right on, oh, yes, remember.
This should be someone, I think it just brought up again, so you say, this should be someone. Will be saying or include.
Establishing.
Okay, here's why I got the last paragraph. Need for staff members to oversee and inspect site construction projects, period. Preferably, this should include someone with years of job site experience or a civil engineering background.
Excellent, moving on to number six. Need for an official field view on a room document. The problem, upon request by members of this committee, no one at the township office could identify which set of plans was current. None of the site plans appears to be clearly labeled and dated. The planning commission should have to sign off on all site plans after they are reviewed and approved by the planning department staff. If approved, planning director needs to stamp and sign the approved master deed documents. And that's the way I have for number six.
I think someone other than, someone in addition to the planning director, I think the planning director issues. But I think if we're talking about ordinance, supervisor, or if we're talking about. You would have to cure the sign.
Well, I won't be a cure for that. No, I know you're cured, yeah. That way, did.
So we have a stamp that I believe says planning department slash planning commission approval with a signature and date line. So, you know, once the site plan is approved, I'll stamp it, sign it and date it.
No, I, when ironically, uh, former planning director Steve Huthen, uh, and his continuing education process is sending me to a class several years ago, uh, it was actually, I think it's fairly, I don't know. Anyway, uh, at that particular class on site. The person teaching the class, if you will, to, I don't know, probably forty, it's in there. Um, specifically said that a planning commission should sign and date every site set, a site plan that includes at each meeting. They should be initial and dated by the chairman of the planning commission at that meeting. And I came back and reported that in this venue and we, no, no, no change was ever made, but what was interesting about that is the person sitting next to me in that class was former township manager Bill Cousins. And he leaned over and he said, well, you don't do that, do you? And I said, no, we don't, but it was very interesting because uh that was what was directed in that class, and I think in this case, that might have been beneficial, at least for our current township manager to have been able to find the most up to date plan to the last part. Yes.
Brian, when we talk about site plan, there was one thing that I read, that it could be about eight or nine pages, that you have a landscape plan and the
Yeah.
Water plan and whatever. So that we would have to then sign each page in the final site plan. And that site plan is on big machines.
Yeah, we require a twenty-four by thirty-six, at least one copy of that.
So that, that a signature would appear on every page of a signature and, or two signatures and a stamp. Then his planning director should sign as well.
Number rapid.
Um, I like it, the planning chair should sign, was like, you know, more small exchange appears in the last sentence, needs to be appeared.
Here. And I would put a change in the first line.
Number rapid, you're making, uh, you're asking a massive change, uh, words is if none of the site plans appear to be third directly and dated. Thank you. All right.
My opinion is where it says the planning mission should have to sign off on all site plans after they have been reviewed and approved by the planning department staff. Brian, get me wrong, we don't sign off on all or.
Right.
It's only the ones that come for to us.
You're right, you're right, it should be, the planning commission approves.
Any changes or changes, modifications.
We don't do barriers, but, but, I, I.
They would sign, he would sign those data, but anything that has to appear.
Well, it should be anything, the planning.
That is reviewed and approved here, you need the initial.
After, so it really says the planning commission should have to sign off on all site plans after they are approved by the planning commission.
Right, but then I do think it does need to say that the planning director needs to sign and date all because you sign and date some that you just, you approve.
Mm-hmm, yeah, like if there's an administrative one, I'll.
Yeah, because it's too.
Maybe you should just say that this does that.
I just think it's.
You, this, this, yeah, the planning director still needs to sign.
I, I, two separate statements. I think one is the planning director needs to sign and date all.
All approved.
All approved site plans. And then he approves, maybe, obviously, and then in addition.
I think it is to say and be all approved documents.
He does, he does, really, but then the planning.
Remember, brother, shaking his head, no.
Just a question to your site.
So he signs and dates some of his, then there's certain ones that come here, that also, okay, so you jump on from there.
But the only change I would make is beyond what Wendy was saying, was sign off on all pages of each site plan that has been approved by the planning commission needs the signature of the chair of the planning. That separates it from those, all other site plans administratively approved by the planning director and dated. Should be, yeah, all of them sign and date, sorry, that's.
Can I, can I read the last?
Sure, sure.
The planning commission should have to sign off on all site plans after they are approved by the planning department staff. If approved, if approved, planning director and chairman of the planning commission, comma, needs to stand, comma, sign and date the approved master deed documents.
I think that's a good start, no, man, I just think that it needs to be approved by the planning mission instead of department staff.
I agree.
So that's one.
Our staff is doing the project, they don't need to run it out now.
So that's one part, that's for all of the stuff that comes here.
We know that a master deed includes all pages of site.
Actually, a master deed and site plan are two different documents, site plan isn't included in the master deed.
I, I don't think master deed is, is relevant in number six at all.
I agree.
Okay, so, so the first, the first line here is the planning commission should have to sign off on all site plans after they are reviewed and approved by a planning commission. Now, we're at, Ralph?
Right now, I've got. Right now, I've got the planning commission should have to sign off on all site plans after they are approved by planning department.
Right, need to take it to department, oh, make it commission.
I'm retired. Okay, so I've got the planning commission should have to sign off on all site plans after they are approved by the planning commission.
Then the sentence, correct.
Period.
Period.
If approved, planning director and chairman of the planning commission need to stamp, sign and date the approved master deed documents.
I would say need not.
Uh, what is the second sentence?
If any approved site plans.
Any approved, maybe, the huge.
So I would think any approved site plans need to have the same director's.
As well. Okay, so, so it, uh, the planning director then needs to stamp and sign the approved. Okay, so, so it, uh, the planning director then needs to stamp and sign the approved documents as well.
Having any approved documents, because that covers the ones that are just.
Any, any, so the, the next sentence should be, the planning director then needs, should say then, the planning director needs to stamp and sign any approved.
I was thinking in addition, um, the planning director, even though really it should be. It should be, it should start with the planning director needs to sign and date and whatever you just said, and then after that, in addition, the planning mission should have to sign off on all site plans after they've been reviewed and approved by the planning.
Yeah, you're right. Are we on the second sentence of that last paragraph? Well.
Flip the two sentences.
Right in the very front. Right in the very front. So number six, the answer, we're gonna start with a new sentence. Are you ready to take that? Okay, I'll, I'll.
Maybe you should just pass your computer on there. Yeah, or you have a works here. Okay, um, the planning director, is how it's said, the planning director needs to stamp and sign and date.
Stamp, sign.
All.
All approved documents.
All approved documents.
Ready?
Okay, in addition. The chairman of the planning mission.
The chairperson.
The chairperson of the planning mission, sorry. It's for keep the mutual. The chairperson.
Chairperson.
Of the planning mission.
Okay.
Will sign off. Sign off all site plans. After they are reviewed and approved by the planning mission.
All site plan pages, I thought we were saying the front of it, I'm just clarifying. I think we need to sign every page because they're, they're not stapled together.
It just needs to have a table of times that shows what each chapter, how many pages are there, and we're signing that. Now we have somebody slips an extra page in, you know that it's now, then they understand the food or whatever.
You've been on a song. Because.
I see you're saying they can change the page.
That's right.
Right. I, I, I see.
Okay, are you ready?
Uh, I, I, I'm, are we ready to go on to number? For real, for real.
Okay. The planning director needs to stamp and sign and date all approved documents, period. In addition, the chairperson of the planning commission will sign off all site plan pages after they are reviewed and approved by the planning commission, period.
Do you want the pages? I don't, not, I don't care.
I, I think you should, I think you should.
Well, I, I would, I would say. Oh, no, just, just hang on a minute, I don't think that's that bad, because I'm looking at my notes for my report that I moved beyond, because I apparently had to report people. And, uh, there aren't, there aren't too many, uh, that would not be too many.
All right.
I don't think, Brian, what, what's your take on that? Is that a big, you know, I think it's five minutes, that big a page, right?
Mm-hmm.
Walk over your desk.
Yep.
Get a pen. Should be solved. Okay, moving really long. Number seven, this one might be quick. Uh, number seven, it currently reads Google payment required for performance bonds. The problem, similar to number two, Google payment should be included in the check or software program. I think we kind of, we can cover that number two, right? Number Rappin', you have to hand up, fix my app.
I suggest you just write number seven.
I was thinking a lot of those same lines, remember Merlin?
I have two questions. With an overarching, with an overarching comment that I created Mr. Rappin' that this is getting at the week, at a far too level, but I love these. Um, when someone doubles the size of their proposed houses in a development, we go back, because I read somewhere that we have the ability to go back and double their, what they initially paid for the various permits.
Reassess the current fees based on the
actual, the actual, as, right. Brian, do you want to answer that or?
You mean a building fee? Yeah, that'd be a building department fee question.
Okay, because if you just got away with paying half price on all of these houses, it was driving for the rough up.
I understand, but I, I, I. It is, so are we all agreeing that number seven can be struck from the, the last? Okay, now we're going to move promptly onto number eight. I just want to let everybody know, and don't everybody scream excited at the same time we're over.
I'm not going to forget numbers that are.
What we're going to do is join some of them, so. Okay, so number, number eight. Issuance of cease and desist orders, the planning director should have the authority to stop work on a construction project. The planning director is to notify the planning commission if he takes such action. The planning director should notify the builder of any violations in advance of taking such action. I don't think building needs to be capitalized, but, uh, and I think we, yeah, I think we would say the builder and developer
because they were two different.
They could be two different entities, correct.
Um, and the other thing I would say is the planning director should know the side builder and developer of any violations and provide a reasonable time to cure prior issuance of the stop order.
Seven to ten days.
In.
There's a problem, you have seven to ten days to get it fixed, we'll be back before it's back.
Member, of generally never hit up first.
It's just, um, is this something you're always, I mean.
I, so I personally haven't had to get into that yet. I believe I have the authority to. I've talked to the building department a little bit about this. For example, Thornapple Point, they had to make their improvements, and that was taking a while. I talked to Brian Wilson and said, "Well, if it's in, you know, there's a zoning violation, they can, you know, stop issuing building permits and things like that." And they did make the changes, but I had to go down that road, but. So I haven't had to get involved with that yet since I've been here, but my understanding is I have the authority to at least tell the building department, hey, they are in violation of, you know, a zoning ordinance, so.
This is my, my opinion, I just feel like, again, going back to the one we already touched on, I don't feel like this should be your main job, but I feel like if something came up, I do think that you should have the ability to be able to do this. Um, but I think that we do need what we talked about in the other one, where there's somebody else's job. I don't think that should be your job to go up every day and monitor what's going on.
I think some of this would fall under that project, that other position. I think we'd work in tandem, well, that would be my understanding.
Problem with the committee discovered is that there had been so much dust on the process for this, because as Brian Wilson said, it was first back here, it should not work for us in sixteen years, uh, that nobody really knew the process as to who had the authority to stop. Timmy, you thought of the township board, I think that's the authority to stop a project, right? Township managers. So, I mean, there's, there's, there definitely was some dust here that, that had to be, uh, moved through. Remember, I just want to ask, how, number eight is substantially different from number five? Because number five establishes talk about stopping a project and issuing a cease and desist order, see, but not responsible. But we're specifically calling out
That the only thing I think about why it should be different is that I, if I was a part of the sub-teams, is just that I think that some of the public health profession would have issues. And so I think that we need to call it out and hear to say, um, issuance of it, and that the planning director means that we have the ability, and the other one, they do have the ability to do that, but that's just my thought.
Because we're major issue on, we're all billable.
Right, and I think it's public, I think that it is a question that people had, why it wasn't issued. That's just my thought, is why it was ten days to see that the effort from that.
I think it looks good to have, remember Merlin?
I might suggest we change the title of the page. Issuance of cease and desist order. We, the, uh, understandable. Or something.
I feel like when we talk about the process, that is addressed in number five. It's not the whole two cycles. Yeah, that, that, the whole process problem is addressed in number five. I feel like if we're gonna talk about the cease and desist order, which I feel like a lot of the public is wanting a lot.
Can I just jump in here? I don't, I don't know if I can stand up, but why don't we just take the answer from number eight and slightly tweak it and add it to the answer on number five? Well, can we just elaborate on number five a little bit more? And eliminate number eight altogether?
It would just really have to be probably the second sentence, um, to explain the planning directors to note the planning mission if you take such action, things such as emission of cease and desist order.
I think it's kind of, it must have been third.
Well, I know I.
Do we, Brian, issue cease and desist orders or are you going to issue stop work orders?
I haven't had issue one yet. I would see it as a stop work order, so I would view it as, but I'd have to confirm that.
How about we just say violation?
I think there's a difference between violation.
In Kent County, that notified them twelve times, violation. And then they finally asked our inspection department to issue a stop work order.
Oh, okay, I agree. Whatever, so that, let's see, all of the paragraph, we move it to the other one and get rid of the number eight.
Number eight is gone, and this answer, the answer of number eight goes to number five. Christine, or, or what do you have, what do you?
I didn't need to go a little process into this, to stop the work order. Is it, that has to be done by the planning director in the rush, to whoever is violating whatever, or, or. And give them a timeframe to correct it. Can't really say seven days, ten days, you don't know how big of a violation it is, it might take two weeks to prove this. Solve that problem, you gotta put a deadline, it's gotta be in writing, it's gotta be in the plan.
I was wondering, did it put it under number five, it's kind of a piece of number five, it's number five to talk and about the process that needs to be developed. So then to put it under there, it's kind of part of number five, is probably a different.
Right. So, so maybe the sentence needs to read something along the lines of the planning director should notify the offender of any violations in waiting in, in advance of taking such action. Unless there's such action that would be. Should we say one line?
Maybe we should read, let's go back to number five. Maybe read the paragraph of number five and then just.
Okay, the letter notifying the offender of the violation would also be over that timeframe to have it corrected.
I don't mean.
And then. So if that process had to be half the time for every other site.
I should share it off screen.
Well, that's what we, that we share that word here.
Well, I mean, I understand that way, but I'm saying it, 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 it would, and it would be, yeah, I would say just, we could see a screen.
I agree.
Also. You don't want to see what's on my screen.
Okay, so, uh, currently, we said, uh, number five talks about establish rules and responsibilities for enforcing zoning or insistence on site plans. Then the first paragraph in bold, third paragraph, need for staff members to oversee and inspect site construction projects. Our employees should include someone with years of job site experience or a civil engineering background. Am I on the right one?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then we would add to us
planning director.
The planning director should have the authority to stop work on a construction project, period. Planning director is to notify the planning commission if you take such action, period. Planning director should notify the builder and developer of any violations in advance of taking such, such action and provide a reasonable time to cure the problem.
Right, and maybe the last sentence just needs to maybe say, um, the process should be thought up to the time frame.
Well.
Let us get in a practical way of help of the Kent County Road Commission gave them a week to build seven hundred feet of retaining wall. But if the ordinance had said, build the retaining wall first, then you shouldn't have to give them another reasonable period of time after we notify them that they don't have the retaining wall yet. So I wouldn't say impure.
But I think we're talking about other issues that we are giving notice in a long set notice. If you don't fix these things, you need stop work.
I think generally, most developers have been very receptive to that, and that's why we haven't had a lot of stop work or, stop work orders, it's because you give them that timeframe, that the vast majority of the time, they do make that correction, doesn't get to that point, you know, obviously sometimes.
When we added after violations, we added in writing with the defined, the defined parameters, um, period. Find the period inside.
Say that again.
It's after violations.
Okay.
And in, in writing.
Okay, if I have to add anymore, I mean, I, I just. So you have a great minute.
Okay, I have, uh, developer of any violations in writing in advance of taking such action and provide a reasonable time to cure the problem.
Can, can I ask if you wanted to say builder and developer, or who wants to say offender? Can you drop me? How about somebody who's?
Brian, do you nor, normally not try to build a builder and developer?
I was wondering.
I would probably try to, just, because that would seem to get the best response, it's letting them both know.
Okay.
I think that's, is that what you have, I've got? Okay, great. All right.
It's nice.
Can we move on to number nine? Number nine, need to coordinate Kent County Road Commission's soil erosion and sedimentation controls with Cascade and Turner Township's stormwater ordinance. Township's stormwater ordinance focuses on water flow, while the soil erosion and sediment control focuses on sedimentation. They are tied together. Kent County Road Commission enforces the set of rules, the planning director should be responsible for monitoring and forcing the stormwater ordinance to prevent runoff onto neighboring properties. The reason this is in here is because it was the Roundhouse Committee's view that the township was deferring the erosion issues that the neighbors were complaining about to the road commission because they control soil erosion. But we believe the soil erosion wasn't the direct result to. But we believe the soil erosion wasn't the direct result to stormwater runoff issues, which clearly could be handled in a stormwater ordinance. So the two entities really need to co-mingle here, which the road commission did say Steve, our former planning director, was was good at communicating on things. But we feel that the township could have taken maybe a more forward approach on this as opposed to deferring to the road commission. Is that a good way to put it? Yes, I have been number one is get up first.
Brian, just. When you have a situation where you have. The Kent County sedimentation permits having to be. We were under the impression that. Mr. Peterson simply deferred to Kent County to enforce their permits, even though the sedimentation. By stormwater, which in theory was under our stormwater ordinance. Did he just, or is there something that says, I've not found it, that says Kent County controls it and therefore our stormwater ordinance is of no. Relevance?
Not to my knowledge.
That's what I think he did.
This is a lot of lines of the question, I think. I don't know if he'll clarify money even more.
Money is a good word for sedimentation.
We don't call them air mail services department.
No.
Okay, and so anything that does do with like the federal regulations for stormwater runoff. Is that controlled by the county versus the township? Because that is kind of the question. Like, there are federal regulations for stormwater runoff. And in a lot of municipalities, it's all controlled by the county. It is not controlled by the township level. So that's where we're talking about referring things to the county. I'm wondering if that's what's happening. And on a side note, before you answer, I do for future reference, I won't. Share about it. I do think that maybe we need to invite somebody from the county drain commission or if I have to serve the county department to come and speak to us. Just to kind of mend some sort of a relationship with them, so that I understand how our relationship goes down. So we can understand where our boundaries and where it is to take over. If such a Brian doesn't know the answer to this question, so we do know who is controlling the cycle for regulations and.
Are these?
Remember, Chris, I think that's actually excellent.
I think when you hear, we talked about that, he was very receptive to.
Though do I?
Yeah. Yeah. I think so too. I think you would be agreed to just have. On process. So what do you think about that?
Yeah.
Because something we could coordinate for.
That's one of the first questions that we asked about stormwater. And I need somebody that knows and that can direct us to explain these blocks would be great.
Perhaps maybe next year sometime at a meeting when there's nothing on the agenda.
Related in that.
Yeah. Address that with never be so.
But actually, the question is, do you don't know whether.
I would think that we would enforce our stormwater ordinance and then be the county or Eagle would be the one to enforce state regulations. Would be my interpretation. Yeah, I would think. Yeah, probably Eagle.
Number nine.
Well, I'm just adding a paragraph after the number nine, need to report a CCRC soil erosion sedimentation control. So CCPT, stormwater, stormwater ordinance, I'm adding the problem. That Round Hill CCP was deferring to KCRC for enforcement of water runoff problems.
I'm uncomfortable with that.
I mean, I think we need to find there was a problem there. The ball was getting dropped into human form organizations.
But actually, I'm not sure the ball was dropped on the KCRC because they had.
Right, we just should have taken some, we should have taken some action before it escalated to that.
Um, because they were on site within a couple of months after the coming of that.
So I would be okay with that, Steve.
Yeah, hold on.
Right? Okay, moving right along.
One, I used some of that paragraph. I'm just not, not to try to dodge anything, but the planning director shall be responsible. I don't know how this new project manager position would work. They might be the one, if they have a civil engineering background. Stormwater, so I assume there should be a staff.
Designate a person responsible.
A staff member, something.
Staff doesn't get a person responsible for monitoring any person's storm ordinance or just something fortunate.
We would have been forested our stormwater that that would. Any of this level. If we just.
You could say the board or staff should be responsible. If you wanted to say it that way.
And let the board decide whether they want to or not.
Right, I mean, it's a recommendation, so the board can carve these out anywhere they want. What we're writing here doesn't mean the law.
It doesn't.
But I'm back to the board or staff should designate a person responsible for monitoring enforcement of stormwater ordinance. Prevent runoff on neighboring properties.
Right, so then we go to number ten. Maybe you should save that. Go to. What's that? I mean, it happens. I've been there. I made an email tag. Okay, that's what I follow the battery method though. Number ten. Enforce the developer's work plan by establishing deadlines. The problem, the Round Hill developers, that's their continuing work construction until after proceeding with post-construction for three years in the project. This caused much of the erosion problem. If the construction work is done in phases, then there should be established deadlines for completing tasks outlined in the work plan. Set firm deadlines for features that must be completed before the builder can move on to other work. Builder must notify planning director when a feature is completed. So this stems from actually former planning director Peters said may be remark that. He, I think he worded it as key infrastructure in a project should in a PUD should be specifically mentioned with a set deadline of when that key infrastructure needed to be completed. That was kind of one of his big takeaways from his review of this this. Right, situation. And and one, and the best example, which remember earlier as well, recites, is the retaining walls. The planning commission failed to recognize the need to set a deadline to say, you know, by the time you build your second house, the retaining walls have to be built and and completed. Or whatever that 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 point is, but there was no deadline put in there. So in theory, everything could be done, even the landscaping and then you build retaining walls. And that's not, in this case, that didn't work. And in every development, I think those those deadlines are different and the need for different aspects of key infrastructure is different. So, but that's, that's what.
And the ordinance, I would say that each of these items. Needs to be outlined. Which we do typically. But we never define what a construction was and we never defined that ordinance was light on detail on when, what was the reason for.
Right, we have what generally the question for. Again, the Round Hill Subcommittee meeting, I use the example of the two developments that we approved at the corner of Route sixty of Street. And there was a, you know, pathway that went between the cul-de-sacs and we said at the time, a certain number of houses will be completed, the path had to be built. So I mean, we've done things like that. It's just that clearly we, we could have done better here. Remember, you had pretty much a while.
Uh, again, just given the work that we've done, number one, number two, the five processes, the time things. I understand you want to retain more here, but then we add the cover pen with the changes.
Any sense of that, I think we have, and they are also getting the more detailed recommendations that were in. Documents that I prepared, which go to, unfortunately, the ordinance from Round Hill was a little sloppy in not identifying retaining wall as part of the facilities. For stormwater, et cetera. And if they'd done that. Then. Would have been much easier to firm a term of the deadline. Because in Round Hill, they, when they near cut that site and they pushed, and they're all the way all the way to the property line.
Right, we also have to take step back and look in from the outside and understand that over the course of time. I think in almost all of our development situations, the first step that is typically taken is the preparation of the site as far as the elevations and the retaining walls and stormwater management. I think of developments I see getting built and they all have the stormwater management stuff built first. And at Round Hill, the developer chose to do it out of what I would consider the normal, the the normal pattern, if you will, the normal order of things. And that's really what led to a lot of these problems, and I think it caused staff off guard because usually people read left to right. And in this case, it looked like they were reading from right to left. None of that.
It was all about money. You're forced to delay as long as you can, hoping to sell more homes so I have more money for five figures, about half ninety dollars.
But I, I think that, you know, it, it. The point is I did the. They weren't prepared for that. But back to the point. What do we, what do we think?
I think. We want to mention timeline and schedule, the other numbers each. The best that's been talked about.
Really, all, all we would like to say is that that science is, set deadlines for features that must be completed before the builder could move on to other work.
I agree, and some examples, retaining wall, sidewalk, stormwater. Key infrastructure such as sidewalks, retaining walls, stormwater management.
And then we can sort of. Okay, well, I hope we're all with that a minute. I landed.
Remember the sentence?
We're gonna roll this ten into, what number are we rolling it into?
I think most into. I think it's. But two. The development process attracts. Also, number one, we've got. Figures.
Are we still on our zoom key there, Brian?
I believe so. I lost our one public a long time ago. They left a while.
Now, I can already be recognized.
That's it.
Okay, here's how we have reworded this classic sentence. Set firm deadlines for key infrastructure elements, parentheses, retaining walls, stormwater systems, retention ponds, roadways, in a parentheses. That must be completed before the builder can move on to other work. Builder must notify planning director when a feature is completed.
I don't, does the builder really need to notify you when they finish every feature in a project?
I would say if it's being listed in the PUD ordinance, we probably need that.
All right, all right.
Probably fight anyway to affirm it.
That'd be a good idea. Okay, so now, where did you put that sentence? Is that still in number ten or maybe it's on number ten? Okay, do you want? Two was about software. Well, I know stuff about software more. Okay.
So we think it needs to go there, but we're not sure. Should it go before the fact that it's been filed with the board? And then all sounds should stay more than that.
No, actually, I would say isn't that sort of at the beginning, everything is filed with the board?
You're gonna file that first, then it will be.
Could you read number one and then the number two and then we'll. So we're in eleven, eight, ten, except for that paragraph last paragraph. And we go back to. One and two.
While he's scrolling, I will like, still let's keep on tier for this before the meeting, so don't feel like I just. I know you feel bad, I can tell from your facial, but let you know that here we talk and so we can be willing to bring the computer. This is, this is part of the point.
Uh, number one, PUD ordinances and master deed must be reported according to current rules. The problem, either the master deed or PUD ordinance for your birth construction. You want me to read the rest of it? Well. You can just. The true software needs to be acquired and used to record key documents. Probably there's no organization chart or checklist available to make sure master deeds or bonds or other project documents were recorded.
If. You said software. That would. Change that.
If that's something we're more pleased with. Who's the end of the development? Define the process or develop the client process.
I think we changed it in paragraphs down the road, but I don't think you ever address it in the actual goal. Yeah.
Yeah. The process of defining the key. We did, we, we did.
Want to take out software, change it to something else here? In bold. Right after number two.
Wait, you shouldn't say software. You should say process.
About process?
Well, process needs to be defined instead of required. Process needs to be defined and used to record. See that. We begin. Process needs to be defined and used. To report.
And correct, follow track, progress.
Which is what we're getting.
And I think milestones in the heading. We have a paragraph saving.
Okay. All right, process needs to be defined to, what was it?
And use.
A process needs to be defined and used. To record E documents and milestones.
How did that?
I think this is just the heading.
This is the heading. The heading.
Yeah.
That's in the body. We just have a little heading. Editing it.
Okay, a process needs to be defined and used to to record a feedback news.
And my
I'm worried about that.
Yep.
There's no
Unless your computer's separate.
Now, we're we're really here, we're trying to move double up.
But we need to give the paragraph a little extra.
Okay. You want me to just read that number eleven paragraph?
Sorry, it's number eleven.
Number two.
Okay, first of all, from there was an organization charter checklist available, make sure master deeds or bonds or other project documents will report it. Fine development process needs to be developed and used for attracting projects including bonds, hurdles and deposits. Documents are to be filed with clerk, all township stakeholders shouldn't have access. So for that, we're going to add
Core that all township stakeholders, people that we have.
I I think it should be at the bottom because it's after that part. I mean, you're kind of going in order of how you do things, right? The construction comes after those things are done, because that was part of the problem at Roundville, is that the construction happens first and then those things happen. And it shouldn't have been the other way around.
If the construction, there should be established deadlines for completing tasks outlined.
Okay, okay.
And then you set firm deadlines, features that must be completed before the builder can move to other work.
I didn't, I didn't.
And so that's why I was thinking that was all part of that, and it should all be available.
I I can read it right here, what are we thinking? So, so I
And I I also think it should not be the deadline, the the project deadline also be filed with clerk.
Well, in a PUD, they're in the PUD.
Okay.
So they're they're part of it, they're part of that. They're in PUD.
It should, it should only by one place. So we don't have to solve this again.
So I didn't know if we put that, lift that whole sentence, but it's fine, but it's still.
I don't, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna eliminate number ten, but we're gonna keep the final paragraph.
And move that into
Move that to number two.
Correct. Are we keeping that paragraph as it's written or are we not?
I think I may have to.
Let me let me read it again, we're gonna add this to number two, if construction work is done in phases, then there should be established deadlines and PUD ordinance for completing tasks aligned in a work plan. Set firm deadlines with key infrastructure items, retaining walls, thermal water systems, retention ponds, roadways. That must be completed before the builder can move on to other work. Builder must notify the planning director when a feature is completed.
I I have an objection, I'm assuming when the rap is going on, same thing. I was gonna say, I don't know that we should specifically cite PUD because we could have, we could have deadlines in any project that might not be a PUD, it might just be somebody doing a development, uh uh, you know, split by rank. I mean, there's there's the, I think we're, I think we're narrowing our um our salt down if we if we put PUD in there, I don't think, I don't think we need to be that specific.
Okay. All following that, we're talking about structures, we're moving it to that paragraph about development. Thinking of development is done, it's not construction. And if you thought all the builder, developer, anything across the product, it's not just
Correct.
Correct, so maybe you should start reading again and we'll try to stop doing
Not do, get to the first deadline.
Uh so this is what we will add in number two?
Yes, please.
If the construction work is done in phases, then there should be
Yeah.
I think so, I think that should work.
The header has established a process for development.
One of us should say project, it's about the developer. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to, it might not be a development, it could be a
Or these restaurant proj- projects might be best.
Yeah. You know, I did, I did say a lot earlier, but
Okay, if the project is done in phases, then there should be established deadlines or completing tasks aligned in a work plan. Set firm deadlines with key infrastructure elements. Parentheses, retaining walls, thermal water systems, retention ponds, roadways, in a parenthesis.
Do you want to put, I think, do you want to put et cetera at the end?
I can just say such as.
Because that's not a com- that's not a comprehensive list.
Parentheses, that must be completed before the builder, or should we say the developer? We think in terms of project.
Okay.
Yeah, that's almost what I was, because that's how we treat, we say call him the applicant, and that could be an owner or builder or developer, so.
Advocate.
Right. Oh, yeah, you can say that, that's the test. So string builder and say project. And then the last sentence, instead of builder, must notify, should be applicant. I like those universal terms, it's a lot more common. Yeah. I'm just thinking, because when we say development, I'm thinking of the Royal Houses up street. And I'm thinking of all the PUDs we have proven, a lot of them are individual, you know, office building, dentist office, restaurant. Those would really not be able to apply to what we're running into, and that could be a critical problem.
Okay, let me make sure I got this right, I don't think I do. Separate deadlines for key infrastructure elements, parentheses, retaining walls, thermal water systems, retention ponds, roadways, et cetera, in the parentheses. That must be completed before the project can move on to other work.
I would just say before the project can continue. That would move on to other, I like that.
Continue, that's good.
Yeah.
The applicant must notify the planning director when a feature is completed. How about we move on to number two?
Yeah. Right, it's bottom, bottom of the two. Okay. Correct. All right, moving right on, number eleven is gone, so we skip over number eleven. We're going to number twelve. Where should a cascade resident go? The problem. The town's neighbor to the southeast voiced their complaints about erosion for two years, nothing was done, plenty of people actually If no ordinance enforcement officer is active, the township manager should doesn't need inter and total position is filled, this person should, this person will make it easier for residents to submit complaints. The interim staff could be the planning director, your whole position is filled permanently. It needs to be known to the general public and the staff that when a person has a complaint, this is the, it will be properly and not ignored. The problem I see with this wording is that I believe we had an ordinance or law started, I don't know, this happened. We did, we just, they resigned.
Stephanie fast with her. She was her coenforcement.
And then they hired that other person, I thought that
I thought she was just code enforcement.
I thought they had I thought they had
I think that at one point Stephanie was doing zoning, she was doing everything.
She was doing everything, then she broke off and did code enforcement, and then they hired the person, I thought, was it to take that over, or was that to take over her?
That was to help with, I think, code enforcement, is a part-time position that wasn't around very long.
When the rap, what do you have to add?
Well, I just want to propose a couple things we talked about before, so whereas this is currently a question. I'm wondering if we can simplify number twelve to be establish and document a concern resolution process for cast state residents as the statement. What was I saying, I wrote, I wrote it down aside, so I can take this. Establish and document a concern resolution process for cast state residents. That's what, that's what we're going to do. I propose.
I love that.
Uh you gotta read it to me slower.
Establish and document a concern.
Right now.
Headshot.
Establish and document a concern.
Okay.
Resolution. Process.
Okay.
For cast state residents. And then if I didn't want to.
Yeah.
I guess I suggest for the problem, simplifying to just one statement. The town's neighbor to the southeast voiced their complaint about erosion for two years without satisfactory resolution. And I'm proposing that we strike the second sentence, that nothing was done. And I don't know that it was fully nothing, I just don't think that it was satisfactory.
I think that's uh, that's good, we're all right.
Go back to the problem again. I guess I would ask you all, one neighbor, I could be I'm just, I'm just saying, neighbors residents, residents voiced their complaints about erosion for two years or for multiple years without a res- without satisfactory So neighbors voiced their complaints about erosion for multiple years without satisfactory resolution.
I think that's a totally collection.
Well, I don't know the best new, because again, it's in your documents. And if we're simplifying I think it's good to leave it raw. If we do that, if we make those two changes, then I would propose that the paragraph that's there now is replaced with the established process is made widely available on the CCP website.
And I think there should be somebody responsible for getting answers to that complaint.
I would include that in establish and document a complaint resolution or concern resolution process.
And I would put in my own some hints around this township at a time, and who made the mediation with the complaint.
I I just, I feel again too that it's, it's um, it's a slippery slope, this is about what's happening, I mean, I'm gonna complain about that very little development that happens in state. I think that Brian could be spending all day answering up complaints if I decide that I'm angry about every new development going to state and I want to file a complaint every time, so I think there needs to be some kind of, is is something here that is a little broad in some sort of interpretation. And I don't know how to do that, but I'm just saying, I think we can have some people that are complaining about every single little development going in. And we expect Brian to respond to every person.
You sometimes get the person that's mad at everyone else in the neighborhood. I'm gonna give you these twenty complaints about every single one, I don't want to have to spend a week trying to respond to every single one of those.
Going out and looking at what they're complaining about, seeing if it violates, I mean, there's a lot.
Yeah, that's what I feel like, without being restrictive again, I I feel like it needs to establish the need for the concern resolution process. We can review that and provide feedback that's inadequate, even regardless of feedback, but I guess I would like staff, like staff creating that process for us to review before we dictate what's up. And especially in the I guess at our level, trying to correct what we want to see, it doesn't leave the mechanics to how, to the staff, professionals to be. Let me read that, where I've got uh the problem, the neighbors voiced their complaints about erosion for two years without satisfactory resolution. Establish and document a concern resolution process for cast state residents, period. Yeah, so, well, I guess the only yeah, I think you shared the establish and document a concern resolution process is the headline, and I think if we had a paragraph below it is to disseminate the process, make it available on the website, make sure that the residents are aware of the process.
So the heading should be totally different?
No, no, I think we should write, I'm just saying, we struck that whole paragraph below and replace it with essentially, start the word.
Yeah, you brought, you brought the heading in the bold, the top one perfectly, and then he's saying the whole paragraph, not in bold, so it's the
Pointing out something to him, and listening to this. If a person has a complaint that they don't feel is being answered properly by staff, our draft by law, section five point five G, that's the thinking from here, that's the question, and we as a planning commissioner make a good paid effort to provide, to respond, so it, I mean, there's There's a process.
Process.
Okay, so we are, we're, can you read them? Whatever we had, checked out, we have number twelve.
Okay, number twelve, where should a cast state resident go with a complaint question mark? We, the heading for number twelve is the establish and document a concern resolution process for cast state residents.
You had that written somewhere.
Well, I called it the problem.
Okay, move that up to number twelve.
No, that is, that is
We're gonna say that, edit number twelve, so you say number twelve, colon, establish and document the concern resolution process for cast state residents. Establish and document a resolution
A concern resolution.
Resolution. For cast state residents. Establish and document a concern resolution process for cast state residents. And take out the problem?
No, 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 you have the problem correct, the problem is to simplify to the problem on Well, let's, I can read the problem at, and then you can read the line which is
All right, so the problem, a, the neighbors voiced their complaints about erosion for two years without satisfactory resolution, period. Establish and document a concern resolution process for cast state residents. Which is a need of what's, the time I
Yeah.
Yeah, the last sen- the last sentence is just replaced with share.
Is the new paragraph?
Okay. Well, no, the last sentence, you move to the heading.
Right, right.
So the last, whole last paragraph, it's perfect, it just says, we're going to share the process, the concern resolution process with residents on the website. Somehow we can say, staff needs to tell residents
But you just said save.
Share, share the concern resolution process on cast state residents. So I got uh there is a concern resolution process on the cast state township website.
Yeah.
You're in.
I do buy that. Um, right, yeah, I think
Ninety thirty.
I know, so I are we, are we prepared to have this document now as we've added it? Uh presented to the township. Are we, are we prepared to have this documented now as we've edited, uh, presented to the township?
I would prefer to have to change the whole thing as well as we've done in all of our notes. I think it would be good to have a chance to make sure that there are no other changes. Since we've done this very much.
Can we have Ralph send this out immediately after and then?
I almost came off tonight. And I feel, it's just my, you guys talk about, I feel comfortable with having you with that and you with notes and I'm not trying to be on the thought in any way. I just feel like I did not take any ideas notes tonight on this one.
I have those on a lot of really good groups.
Okay. I just feel like if somebody feels comfortable. Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I just, that's my, I mean.
Why, why? Okay. I think everybody can get it, but I think it's more of a common theory to get one more quick edit.
Right.
I don't want to turn it off.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
I just don't, I mean.
Don't remember what I had.
Wha- what is the rush to get this tomorrow?
That was my.
Supervisor has to get this out. So that's why I'm.
I, I had just know if there was a reason that's really long agenda tomorrow.
There is a long agenda tomorrow.
Be another team.
I, I think it will be interesting. Um, I just, uh, we seem to be rushing it. I didn't know if there was a.
Is that the reason we can't?
And then have time to review it, look at it, come back with any questions.
Do you think she wanted to get her rap up this year or she didn't want to drag it into the January? Okay. I just think the product is still going to be representative of the rushing that we put into that. I think it was better from, you put so much focus and attention into this, I don't know why we're putting the last two hours to get it done.
We, we have already put a lot of focus and attention in it, but we've got cut up pretty good.
So again, I don't know. I have a whole group of, I think, maybe.
Yeah. My fear is that if this document is sent to Agro, it's gonna be eight different ways to change it. And that's why I, I think I would kinda agree with member of the person that's here that either we, either, either we have a dozen, maybe member Rapid who would use it. Or the other option is that we as a planning commission agree to hit the pause button and, and further discuss it at or just under twenty weeks. But then it's not available tomorrow. But I mean, that's, that's our, that's our choice that we decide to. Whereas, you know, we can, we can let the town chief board down, sir. Specifically, that's what we decide to do. Maybe that's the best thing to do, but. So we're not prepared, we're not there.
We're not suggesting we're not prepared. And I don't think that we'd be letting, I think we'd be.
The quality might not be, right, maybe an inferior product. I, I, I just, what, I mean, do we want to take some voting on this? We want to, I don't want to proceed. Cause I, I don't see her all that.
One of the four members of the sub community, you know, a lot of, that's, you know, you've spent the most time on it. You feel comfortable with it going on the board. In a lot of.
I think we could bring this back again, one hour when you read, redo it, or then, so six of us could come up with different suggestions for next time and then the next time forums would have different suggestions. They could take it to another group and they'd all have suggestions to change this. This could go on and on. I've all been pretty good. Starting portion. I think we're not finalizing everything. These are recommendations to forward to get our, I used to do that hard, I thought, but.
Not, not, not being part of that, that's why I, I feel like I wasn't part of the sub community. You guys have been meeting for months. And I feel like this is what you brought to us. I feel like our job tonight was to try to polish up what your recommendations were. Um, not to bash out the findings because we weren't a part of that, that we took and looked at it kind of from the outside, from the outside, combined some things together. It had Brian's input in it to help stress the part. That's my thing.
I was, I was, no, I haven't done the rest.
I was.
I'm comfortable with moving ahead, but I think we made some great progress. And I, I really appreciate all the input you guys gave us on this thing. Is it perfect? No, probably not. She has five other, we put five more opinions. Uh, I feel good having Ben look at it and chew on it. I'll get it to you tonight. You chew on it, send it back to me as quick as you can. Uh, I'm gonna be done in an hour, probably most of the day. Uh, so I will come on and process it. Just please by the end, around morning or later tonight, go it.
Yeah.
I think we've got a five mistake till midnight. So I can do this, well. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the document after, like, that's, that's inside. I think it's good. I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I'm I disagree with the urgency to deliver it tomorrow, not from anything that has to do with us. I don't feel rushed in what we're doing. I just think if I was in trustee Murrah's shoes, I would be more comfortable with getting that a different agenda. But that's not our call to me. That's their call. So all that, you know, from my perspective, I can say, this is, this is with, with the process that was just described, Dad, the review, final review, make sure that we did this something, the other title or the numbering or something. I'm, I'm fifty go.
I think it will be.
There it is.
Here, like I said, I think this is improved by the board. They're not, not fast as this board is just a call.
Right. No.
Right.
They'll provide more suggestions and there'll be more comments and all that will be able to add more, also feel, you know, that's part of the reason getting in front of the board is that more people are going to proceed. Obviously, we have an amazing lot of people in the audience tonight, but, you know, there'll be more people at that segment, review, yeah, keep them ready.
I guess my problem, more than I can discuss it is, I'd like to revisit what's been included in the bag at tomorrow. I have, I don't know if we've had a chance to thoroughly discuss this as the group. I don't know if this is representative of everybody who was on the assembly. I understand this was done to inform us to create this, but I don't know what the value of this going forward.
What is this?
This being the appendix document.
Which of the appendix document?
No longer to. I think that is.
Little appendix one.
I think it's two. I guess that, that's where I guess there.
Well, the one, okay, I, I have a document labeled round hole investigation subcommittee of the place. So suggested recommendations for the planning commission, December twelve, twenty twenty one. And I, I don't believe that in that document has number one and then up to. And I, I don't believe that document would be pretty important because it says right out that it's for the place. The appendix, however, is factual basis for suggested recommendations. And I believe that the town chief board should receive the appendix.
Okay.
Am I, am I mis, am I misstating this at all?
Are you suggesting the board not proceed interim report?
I'm not discussing, I didn't get to the interim report. I'm talking about, I'm talking about these documents. The one that's titled suggested recommendations for the planning commission, December twelve. It was authored by, I believe, Mr. Murrah. It's one page.
I have it.
I haven't gotten it yet. And I have a whole stack of documents. And I know one of the top. Right.
This document would replace this document.
Correct. I believe that this document, like, one page document, Craig authored, I think it's one page, Craig authored, that says, at the very top of the document, right, it says brown hill investigation subcommittee of the planning commission. The second line is suggested recommendations for the planning commission. I believe we have replaced that with the document that we just edited. Am I incorrect for stating that? So everybody agree that that? No.
Well, if, the notion is, do I agree that the document we get it for tonight is a better statement of our recommendation than this one? I would vote no. But if the rest of the commission wants to go with the version that we talked about tonight. Um, so we.
But I. Right, right.
We can, we can take this recommend, set of recommendations out.
Well, I think that's, I, I think that's the direction that we're moving, that I'm mistaken, but I do believe that the appendix one that you have should be submitted because it has all of the facts, right? And am I, am I wrong here? Am I, I'm just trying to, I, I'm just trying to make sure that we all have a clear, concise idea of where we're going with all of this paperwork.
Yeah, I just.
Of what, what we are. Right. So I believe they are putting forward the document that Ralph edited. Everybody agrees with that?
No.
And why did we just, why did we just spend half hours?
I know you guys spent one and a half hour when I participated in it. But it's still. It needs, in my view, and I know I take a more detailed view than most, I wouldn't use it. But if the rest of the commission wants to use it, so be it. The vote would just be seven to one. That's fine.
All right, then let's vote. Yes.
Yes. Can we vote on the entire packet?
Yep, let's start, let's start with.
Can we, can we finish talking about the documents before we hit on a motion? Or do you want to, do these one edit each document, one at a time? Okay, so I, my thought is the packet would be, the document we just edited, we would include the appendix that has some feedback supporting the first set of relevant changes.
Oh, I didn't think.
Although it might. It, it was, so maybe that would open to review. No, I mean, it.
I think it's supporting information, special.
It's factual information. It's not making suggestions, correct, right?
Like, does the office? No, it's not making suggestions. It's just supporting the recommendation.
Right.
And it just depends on the recommendation, just depends on how you wanna present those. Um, and because I think Ralph and I are on the same wavelength on what in general the recommendation should be. Um, and these facts support. I mean, we've got a lot based at one or two right now in the new uh, process, what they were gonna use last night. And a lot of these support process changes, so.
Okay.
You mean the facts would apply to the one.
Okay, so if we use, we're gonna call it Ralph's document, the appendix, which is the two pages of facts.
Okay.
And the other document that we haven't discussed is the November eighth report in a report of the planning committee by Ronald Subcommittee regarding the development.
Would everyone on the, Ronald Subcommittee?
Rooted.
Particularly with the comments, with the changes made from previously, I think, in support of them.
So does this, di- in the file process, I think was that a copy of this report was going to be handed to the township board number so that they had a, so they had a copy of it?
My little problem with this document.
Yes.
Giving this to anyone or even the document in general, it states that the planning committee of KSC township, which I'm assuming that means the planning commission?
Yeah, that is done then.
Okay, but that state from November eighth, that we got this report. And we didn't. And I don't feel that it's appropriate to give this to the board because this, to me, makes it sound like all of us sitting here got this report back on November eighth and had all this information to speak about, not tonight or whenever we go. And we're sitting here at the eleventh hour making recommendations to the board, and I don't think that's fair to any of us to make it sound like we all got this on November eighth when we did not get this report on November eighth.
I think.
I think the date is wrong.
Only the tenth hour.
We're getting close.
There, there's also opinions in, in commentary in this report. Uh, that, in my opinion, could be viewed as prerogatory by certain board members and may cause them to, to, to add a disproportionate amount of weight in one direction or another on the other documents that we're providing. And I think we'll look into, I, I probably get invited to the meeting. You got close, but there are still some bits.
I think the whole document, we, it's all key, it's key at stake that this came to us on November eighth and we did not get this report on November eighth.
We did that? I don't know what day we talked. I thought at one point that this report was.
This report has been talked about, this condition before.
So I talked about it.
We never got this. We got a bunch of talk about this, but we do not.
Scott, I think you, it was more of a verbal presentation on the eighth, was it not? I don't think I've ever seen that document myself, but I think it was a verbal presentation on the eighth and then.
And that's, that's my point. This is a, a very detailed document.
Okay, all right. Well, then, then where we're at is that it would appear that there is support for Ralph's document and the fact appendix, it appears there's wavering support for the interim report. And some of the neighbors think to judge that it's the bad. And everybody would like to have time to digest this before we, before we give that to the board. That doesn't mean that we can't do that and, and, and give this to them at their next meeting. Give them their interim report at the next meeting and still give them Ralph's report as well as practice facts at this one, right?
Chair.
Yeah. From the committee, four of you deserve a strong desire to submit this final, or this, let's say final. Interim, thank you. Uh, commentary with the other, the appendix and the report. I think, I, I think it will, um, I think we'll be giving them a whole lot of information at once. And it could almost be better to get them with it at two separate times than all at once.
So there's a carry more waste if, if they get it.
I just haven't seen. So that's why, yeah, is, is there something in here that is not listed in the stuff that we're giving them that, that.
I mean, they should have.
I'm not, I'm not. But not. It is not necessarily very material, but I think the address issue was in the interim report, which is on the fact.
Correct.
So there are a couple of things in the interim report.
Interesting things are there that are. But, but again, I think having them get it a couple of weeks later will, I don't, I would think that would, that would be, uh, beneficial to have this come out again. Particularly given the size of the, another meeting. I think there's gonna be a lot of them that should be quickly forgotten about. And if it gets brought up again at another meeting later, it's, I think that would be beneficial. I think.
I feel like, I feel like the outcome of this very thorough, all over the committee is deliverable as we create this. So, like, I think this, this, this accounts for this organization, this accounts for the, all the elements of here. But I, I don't know if this adds merit, especially if we give the recommendations first and then weeks later, say. And here's why we need those recommendations. Like, it almost has to be, kind of with the, not, not.
Not at all.
So.
So where, where are we at?
I mean, it was. Motion, I would make a motion to add, include appendix one and the document that Ralph gathered tonight, the recommendations.
We have a motion by member Rapid with support from, by member Carstage to submit the, we'll refer to it as the Ralph document, the one we just spent, while we're working on. And, and, and appendix one, the two page document of facts that Craig drafted to be submitted to the township board, presented to township board tomorrow night.
By those who join.
By member Masley and trustee Murrah in this room. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Make a note that we have one opposed. I think seven. Fifteen, not mistaken, I call it five, just. Yes, okay, uh, then. Where, where, okay, are we, are we done with article six then, are we moving, are we moving along? Because if we are, it would make us suggestion that we table our bylaws at the time, thank you, thank you. Are you, are we okay? So then my question is, to all of you, we initially, the idea was that maybe we could do bylaws today, and we wouldn't have a meeting at December twenty. Uh, because I don't think there's anything else to be had on December twenty, am I correct?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Right, so I would ask all of you, do you wish to review bylaws on December twenty, or do we want to kick the hand down the road?
I haven't, I looked at it, from my perspective, from what it, what it requires, what we, I think, and, yeah, discussed, I don't know if that's enough to, it is for me, so I just kind of looked at it, but for others, I don't know, uh, if we all have a chance to.
Remember, we had some comments, he said we want to make out of, and I don't, we want to get into those right now, but, uh, so I guess the question is, do we want to discuss these on December twenty, or do we want to discuss these in, in the future, in, uh, in the next year with, uh, you know, the next year? So.
I would like also to discuss them when they have to come up there.
Right, we did discuss that as well.
So remember Merlin said we do it in January. I'm perfectly happy we do it in June, that's right.
Because we want to have those contacts for December twenty? I believe those are ready though, are they not?
I don't think, is this something the attorney's been working on, or is that something that?
They, the ones working on.
I just would argue, but why have a meeting for just this if we're gonna come for, say, approving a chat, um, which I suspect there are a few coming up, uh, we could, we could approve the chat and do this as opposed to this.
The chat was.
But, right, but I feel like it's a, it's a tough, tough, for three hours of last, game, or, can we, I see, like, that revision sent to the office, we should have prepared, it looks quite, yeah.
Okay, well, then, uh.
And the thought is that we never send our, your, the subcommittee, the board, therefore you don't have that weekly to discuss that.
That's my understanding, I feel like the interim report is to be sent to us.
Not so sure.
The supervisor. Was like it as well, but.
If it goes to her, the dates on it, I, or the dates would be changed.
Yeah, and I guess it is to be shared for, I.
It should go to her, it should be addressed to her from the subcommittee and not from the rest of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should not have the full planning permission, it should not be from all of us. That's how it should go, that, if she wants a report from the subcommittee, it can come from the subcommittee to her, but it should not have the planning commission's name on it, and those dates should not be on here, that we got that on that day.
You didn't invite, you didn't do that.
Who's the planner already?
Okay, then, then, all right, so are, are we agreeing to not have any more meetings this year, is that what we're agreeing to?
Unless you choose to call.
Unless there's a need to call, the phone needs to be, the, the, the.
You just said this, this provides, what, as a.
Well, that's something, that's something.
He serves the planning, the path, the path.
That, that was why I called the special meeting, right, because I thought that.
Is there something?
The subcommittee needs to be, the, the subcommittee, you were part of the planning, the planning.
Is there something in here that you think that, because if there is, let's, let's, let's talk about it and get it, that's all I'm saying.
He's saying that the supervisor wants that back, and I said if the supervisor wants that back, then it needs to come from the subcommittee to her, because the planning commission is just now getting.
I agree, the planning commission has authority over the sub.
Okay, can we just.
Does anybody know if there's something specific in that document the supervisor wants that we could, uh, create a presentation? Okay, then, I guess we will move bylaws to a time in January? Is really on the business?
Thank you for your service.
Well, I will, I will be chairman of the first meeting of the year until we do our election, but yeah, I have one.
I see.
But I, thank you for your service. You know, I have really enjoyed, uh, enjoying, especially I have been chairman, you guys have told us some challenges, I've learned a lot, and, uh, if it's one thing I learned as being the president of the largest neighborhood foundation in K S H township for over years, is that, uh, it's good to have a change of leadership from that time, you don't want the same president for that. So, uh, as chairman, I, uh, I am ready to, what, to step away, but our views are leaving again, I'm, I'm.
Thank you, I think, yeah.
Thank you very much. And then I would take a motion to, I guess I would just, well, I'll say. Motion. I have a motion from member Derek with reluctant support of member rapid, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye, opposed? Let's go, oh.